And then I went and had lunch with the Jefferson Five A Champions. They invited me to come in. It was really fun. It was really fun. So we had a little, a little group at Jefferson with a chicken wing thing and then went and had pictures and chatted about it. It was really fun. It was like my fun.
Champion.
Hi Steve. The woman in the red coat wanted to say hi. Okay. Good. Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this public hearing for April 21st, 2014, to order to convene the board as a budget committee. Thank you all for being here. The board has set aside one hour this evening to hear your comments on the superintendent's proposed budget for 2014-15 budget. Public feedback is very important to us. The board, acting as the budget committee, will take everything into consideration before approving a budget. We have interpreters with us tonight. I'd like to invite them up at this time to introduce themselves and where they are located. Great. Thank you very much. With that, I'll read the testimony instructions and then Ms. Houston, if you'd call the first two speakers to the testimony table. So, thank you very much for taking the time to come to our board meeting. We deeply value public input and we look forward to hearing your thoughts and reflections and concerns. Our responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. The board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but the board or staff will follow up on various issues that are raised. Please make sure that you have left your contact information with Ms. Houston or on the sign-up sheet. Pursuant to our board policy 1.70.012, speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel. Any complaints about specific employees should be directed to the superintendent's office and will not be heard in this forum. And a copy of that policy is taped now to the speaker's table. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will come on. During the last minute of your testimony, a yellow light will go on, and when time is up, the red light will come on and a buzzer will sound, and we ask that you please wrap up your testimony at that time. We sincerely appreciate your input and we thank you for your cooperation. Thank you very much. Ms. Houston?
Our first two speakers, Michelle Arntz and Maria Silva.
I think he's testifying. There we go. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Arntz, A-R-N-T-Z. I have two children at Riggler, our neighborhood school in northeast Portland, where 90 percent of our students are historically underserved. Since 2007, the number of students per FTE at Riggler has increased 20 percent. In the last two years, Riggler students have also lost nine instructional days from their school calendar for mandated professional development. Our PTA has advocated at every level of your administration to ask how exactly these choices benefit our students. We have mostly felt that central staff are uninterested in or unprepared for genuine answers to our questions. I have also sought advice from the Parents Coalition and learned that reclaiming lost instructional resources takes intellectual capital, teamwork, and the tenacity to enforce a state mandate. Your proposed budget does not restore any staffing at Riggler and forces our principal to choose between funding academics or social and emotional supports. Given Riggler's significant progress with behavior and discipline, we feel that this choice is unconscionable and counterproductive. Improving our student outcomes will require you to fund classrooms as well as their support systems. Your proposed budget adds two paid days for required professional development, which is a step in the right direction but clearly not enough. Last year alone, mandated professional development costs Riggler students 10 instructional days on average, five with substitutes, and five with canceled school days. Why must students at academic priority schools who need instructional hours the most sacrifice these hours for extra professional development? Our students need each and every school day, and they need highly qualified and well-trained teachers. Choosing between the two will never close the achievement gap and prepare them for middle school, high school, and beyond. How can a system disinvested in its foundation succeed? I am urging you to increase ratio FTE allocations and proportionally reinvest in elementary grades. How can students at your lowest-performing schools raise achievement given less time? I also request that, before the budget vote, you find solutions that ensure compliance with state mandated hours specifically for our fourth and fifth graders without pursuing a waiver from the state for next year. Ultimately, this budget does not reinvest in the staff or the time needed to implement your racial educational equity policy. Riggler students will need both of these resources to meet your policy goals. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Steve, we're not doing questions right now.
Well, I'm, I'm, I appeal the ruling of the chair.
Okay. All those, okay, chairs ruled that we are not receiving, the board is not commenting pursuant to our policies. All those who disagree with that?
We haven't, we haven't received a second. And we're going to go according to Robert's Rules of Order.
You're doing, you're doing, you don't need it for that.
Right, and then, well, yes, you do for an appeal. If you can, if you look on Section 24, that lines it here. Maybe we could have our person who's in charge, Jolly, here. Patterson, go over and give us a, give us a thing.
Any member can appeal out of section. You can appeal. I have it.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we have to vote on it.
Right. That's what we're doing right now.
We're going to vote now?
Yep, right now.
And, okay, and I get to speak to that?
All those in favor of the appeal, no? We don't, there's no discussion on it?
Well, there is discussion.
I did, I did look at these this weekend, so thank you.
Appeal, there is discussion on it, I believe.
So, all those in favor?
What, I don't even know what we're going on.
So, I've ruled that according to our policies, we do not engage in question and answer with our speakers during this part of the board meeting.
Budget.
Budget meeting.
Budget hearing.
Steve has raised point of order.
I'm raising a point of order of you giving him an explanation now. Because if we can't speak to it, you're speaking to the motion.
I'm, I'm explaining what the motion is, Steve.
It's his job to find out.
I'm explaining what the motion is, so that we can move forward.
The motion is, if there wasn't a motion, don't take a second.
It's a point of order.
It's not a point of order, it's an appeal. It's different. I'm sorry to do this, but we have such a mess going on here after last week that I just don't see any other way to go around it.
Steve, no, we're not, we're not going to go forward like that. Thank you. Okay. So, we have an appeal of my ruling. All those in favor of the appeal of my ruling, please say aye.
I'm appealing the fact that you're not allowing discussion.
Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Thank you. You may go forward.
How many votes did you have?
Three.
Well, you, three can pass it, or five?
You have to have, you have to have, you have to have four to pass it.
How many did you add?
You had two.
And you add?
Three.
So it's lost.
You lost.
Yeah, but I still didn't get to talk to the motion.
Okay, we're going to move forward. Excuse me.
Can we move on to the rest of the hearing?
Would you like to go ahead? Thank you.
This is the first time I'm here. First time. Please forgive me for my pronunciation as I read this letter. I will give you the letter when I am finished. My team from Riggler helped me write this letter. I gave them my information. And they helped me write it. I have added an extra word, and that word is racism. And they don't know that. Please don't take it personally. It is from the perspective and the point of view of budget.
My name is Dama. I am a single parent of two children.
Maya.
And my son, Meshe. Means Mexico. My son has special needs and attends Head Start program. And my daughter attends at Riggler Elementary School as a kindergartner. I work full-time and I'm also a volunteer son teacher with kindergarteners' students. I teach them Spanish and I teach them music. I used to be middle class, but after separating from my husband last year, I now know what it's like to experience poverty. Eighty-six percent of the families at Riggler qualify for free and reduced meals. My daughter told me the other day that she could not go into her friend's bedroom, who they live in the trailer homes on Collinsworth and Cooley Street. And I asked the mom, "Why?" And she told me, "Because the whole family sleeps there." The added stress of poverty manifests itself in the classroom, in the halls, and in the playgrounds of Riggler. That's why the restorative justice program has been so vital to have at Riggler. I have seen firsthand the power of this program when we deal with recent conflict between kids of color. A restorative justice specialist was able to intervene and help them come to a resolution. With the budget Riggler has been given for the fall, we will lose our student management specialist, our Black community liaison, and our restorative justice coordinator. The people in these positions are more than simply mediators. They are strong role models and help students believe in themselves and become empowered to resolve their own problems. When children lack positive role models at home, they have been able to learn the coping skills they need at the school from these role models. They listen to our students when teachers can't and when teachers don't. To finish, I just wanted to say that the positions have worked together over the last year to create an atmosphere of greater cultural understanding and appreciation of each other's unique differences. The budget proposed for this coming fall will undermine the great work that we all have been doing and all the work that's been done at Riggler and threatens to further divide us. This is racism. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Gracias.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Our next two speakers, Nathan Means and Rebecca Navarrete.
You can go ahead, whenever you're ready. Thanks to the board and the superintendent for this opportunity to speak with you, and thanks for your work and service of the school district. My name is Nathan Means. I have a third grade at Riggler Elementary School in northeast Portland. A few weeks ago, I took my son and his best friend, who's a second grader at Abernathy in southeast Portland, to Riggler's playground to run around. When they got to the play structures, the friend looked around and said, "You guys don't have any good stuff to play on." And my son replied, "Well, our school is poor." At seven or eight, my son and probably every other Riggler student has learned a very simple lesson about inequality. If you have less money, you don't just live in a crowded apartment, you get fewer public resources. Our neighborhood doesn't have a local library or park or sidewalks on busy roads shared by cars and pedestrians. But I believe the most damaging single element of this inequality is what kids find or don't find at their local school. For kids at poorer schools, like Riggler, which is 85 percent free or reduced lunch, there's a long list of resources that kids at wealthier schools enjoy that aren't available to them. For example, well-funded computer labs, well-stocked libraries, and the newest playground equipment. But if budgets have tightened, this inequality has been laid much more raw. Every school has lost something, but wealthier schools have not experienced the same loss. For example, Riggler has lost considerably more FTEs, as was mentioned before, per student than Alameda, our neighboring and wealthier school, since 2007. This is in large part because of the ability of these schools, PTAs, and foundations to raise tens, if not hundreds, of thousands of dollars. This money doesn't just go to iPads, but the most fundamental learning resource, teachers. Our fundraising capacities in comparison are extremely limited. We can't have silent auctions. We are, however, selling decals here tonight for $5. We need to sell about 20,000 to keep our SMS, so please consider buying two or three. Here's what I request. Some elements of PPS's equity policy are being implemented. For example, Riggler receives some money in that end, but not enough to match the donations by wealthier schools' foundations to their own school's budget. I would like to see PPS pursue these equity aims more aggressively. I graduated from a wealthy high school myself in Montgomery County, a school system that has become a model for reallocating resources to promote equity. That school system has a huge advantage of being in a wealthy, politically liberal county where citizen buy-in was relatively easy. But that doesn't mean it's not a model to consider here in Portland. Whenever PPS pursues more robust policies of equity, you will have our full support and fervent advocacy. I would also urge the board to reconsider the impact that foundation money and transfer policies have on budgets and school performance. Both tend to encourage a conglomerating of the wealthy and/or successful students and the further impoverishing of poorer neighborhood schools. In the specific case of Riggler, I would also like to see actual reinvestment in our school this year. We would like to be able to keep, for example, our student management specialist or restorative justice specialist without losing classroom teachers. We have a great principal and teaching staff, but without these kinds of basic positions filled, too many of our students will be underserved and inequity will remain a pernicious everyday reality. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. My name is Rebecca Navarrete, N-A-V-A-R-R-E-T-T-E. I have a child as well at Riggler Elementary. For many reasons, we're here tonight speaking, and I was told we're losing three staff positions at our school this upcoming year. When questioned, "Well, who's leaving?", the response was, "It's not who, it's the positions that we're not going to be able to fund." If we say who, it's personal. My response was, "This is very personal. You need to understand, as spoken earlier and will speak later, we're losing three positions next year for various reasons of funding." They're not any positions. They're positions that provide so much for our kids, not just my son, but every student there on campus. We're losing three male role models on campus. An underserved school, underserved students that struggle just to survive on a daily basis. My son, every day, everywhere we go, he asks me first question, "Mom, is there any other Africans here in this room?" He looks around every time, that's the first thing he looks for. When he goes to Riggler next year, there will not be one staff member of color. How dare this happen? I pray every night that you guys make the right choice to not allow this happen. We have, through Portland Public Schools', racial educational equity policy. Please go home and read that. See what it says. Regardless of where money needs to be allocated equally, when we fall behind under racial equity, the monies can be appropriated differently. All our kids look forward to these wonderful males. They look up to them. They give them lots of love and praise every day. They don't have male role models in their life, a lot of our students, that are there consistently. These positions, I don't know their exact job descriptions, however, I do know they teach our kids discipline. They teach them how to make the right choices every day. When they, when they do something wrong, they show them how to do it right. And when they're gone, when these three wonderful, amazing males are going to be gone from our campus, who's going to be there for our students? Who's going to be there to lift them up? We had three, 7.3 percent students were suspended last year at an elementary school. We have 13 percent African-American students, plus an additional 32 that are multiple race. I urge you to stop, consider, and think about the decisions that you're making that will affect our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sybil Kelly and Charlotte Kelly.
Steve, would you allow the people to testify, please? Thank you.
Hola, mi nombre es Charlotte Kelly, y yo soy un tercer grado en la escuela de Riggler. Hi, my name is Charlotte Kelly, and I'm a third grader at Riggler School. Yo quiero decir porque yo creo que es tan importante para mí y mi comunidad para mantener al señor Tobin y el señor Cohen en mi escuela. I want to tell you why I think it's so important to me and my community to keep Mr. Tobin and Mr. Cohen at my school. Han sido un gran ayuda para que todos nos sentimos seguros. They have been very helpful, so we all feel safe. Había un chico en mi clase que se había ido la mayor parte del año. Cuando regresó, él y otro chico no se llevan bien y empezó a acogarse al muchacho. Realmente sorprendió a todos y que nos puso nerviosas en clase. Desde que el señor Tobin ha estado ayudando a ellos, ha sido mucho mejor. Ahora son amigos. There was a boy in my class who was gone for most of the year. When he got back, he and another boy weren't getting along. He started to choke the boy. It really startled everyone and made us nervous in class. Ever since, Mr. Tobin has been helping them. It's been much better. And now they're friends. El señor Tobin, el señor Cohen, el señor Fernando, y nuestro consejero, y un montón de otros adultos ayuda a mi comunidad y la escuela. Es por eso que no quiero prepuestos para llevárselos. Mr. Tobin, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Fernando, our counselor, and lots of other adults help my community at school. That's why I don't want budgets to take them away. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for sharing that in Spanish with us. Very good.
There's a lot of great stuff going on at Riggler.
There is.
Leading the immersion program. Hello, my name is Sybil Kelly, K-E-L-L-E-Y, and I'm Assistant Professor of Science Education and Sustainable Systems at Portland State University in the Graduate School of Education. And though I can never completely shed any of my identities tonight, I'm here as a Riggler parent. And I want to acknowledge that all of you have a really hard job, and it's mostly a thankless job, so thank you. Thank you for your service to the community and our schools, and we need you to do more. We need you to put into action the words that you all supported in the Equity Plan, specifically the words reading. "The responsibility for the disparities among our young people rests with adults, not the children." Rather than perpetuating disparities, Portland Public Schools must address and overcome inequity and institutional racism. To achieve educational equity, PPS will provide additional and differentiated resources to support the success of all students." And these are excerpts directly from the first page of the Equity Plan. For most of you, this isn't the first time you've heard me advocate for Riggler School. The last time I was deeply engaged in advocating for equity and justice, it was when Riggler was literally bursting at the seams due to overcrowding. I'm not going to spend my precious three minutes tonight reminding you of the blatant inequities we brought to light three to five years ago, but what is worth saying is that through that process, we chose a data-driven, rational, collaborative approach rather than a litigious one. I've had a long history in the north-northeast community, and I've witnessed firsthand how our schools are facing the complex societal and historical factors, excuse me, that contribute to our inequities our students face, which is also in the Equity Plan. When we joined the Riggler School community as a family in 2007, it was Kristi Lindholm's first year. Since that time, the culture and climate at Riggler has improved a thousandfold. Student achievement has improved. The ratio of referrals of African-American students compared to white students has dropped from six to one, to one to one at times, to one to two. And for Latinos, that's actually reversed, so from four to one Latino to white students is now one, one to two. We have an amazingly strong interconnected group, as you've seen tonight, of students, teachers, staffs, and families that are committed to building a strong multicultural community where everyone is valued for the assets they bring. I want to bring this to your attention, because even in these past years of continually declining resources, Kristi and her amazing staff have transformed the culture and climate of Riggler. Nonetheless, there is so much more work that needs to be done, and morale is often very hard to rally, because it feels that everyone is working extremely hard, all the time, yet the system that your Equity Plan is supposedly addressing continues to create barriers and pushes in the opposite direction. As Charlotte shared firsthand, our restorative justice specialist, Black and Latino community agents, student management special, and all the other teachers and support staff help students from very diverse backgrounds learn to understand and embrace their differences, to develop problem-solving skills, and generally create a safe and supportive environment. As you know, an overwhelming majority of Riggler students are students of color and come from low-income households. Research shows that stress from poverty has similar neurological and physiological impacts as trauma. It's time that those of us with power and privilege stand up for what is true, for what is right, and truly differentiate resources to ensure all students have the support they need to reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tom Kane and Laura Moulton.
You can start anytime.
Thanks. First of all, I'd like to thank Steve, Director Steve Buehl, for coming by our school, and Carol for talking with Jerry Eaton and I about the long-term vision of alternative ed in the district. Oh, my name's Tom Kane, K-A-N-E. We do need a long-term vision for alternative ed, but I'm also concerned that we are cutting our own throats in the short run. And last year, you may recall, I was a little bit upset when I came and talked about the 20 percent cuts we were getting. I've just gone through the most difficult year of my teaching career. And ironically, I came on the same night that you were celebrating the you were celebrating the grant constitutional team, which had more volunteers than we were left with staff. We're asking to be restored to our previous level. We need to build up CTE programs. And as we restore CTE programs, particularly such as a culinary program or alternative energy program, we can use that to leverage money from the state because as we develop new programs, we can apply for grants from the Department of Labor. So I think we can leverage actually additional dollars. And I'd like to say that also during the accreditation process that we went through recently, we were dinged pretty hard for lack of support from the district on CTE programs. We've become antiquated from years and years of cuts, reductions in staff, reductions to programs. And finally, we've had a very bad economy, and as was referred to earlier, we are deluged with mental health issues. I'm really glad to see counselors being restored all over the, some of the middle schools and elementary schools. That's a really important thing, but we need extra mental health services. We're dealing with a traumatized population, an older population that brings a lot of historic issues to the table. And then one more thing, I'd like to express concern that the behavior programs are being cut in the, in the larger high schools, and I'm concerned that those students are going to wander their way to our building where we have even fewer services available to kids that are really dealing with complex behavior and mental and emotional needs. And then they're coming to us because we're smaller and friendlier and nicer, but we just don't have the services and support to help them out. So I'd just like to see our programs restored. Thanks very much.
My name is Laura Moulton. It's M-O-U-L-T-O-N. I teach writing at Lewis and Clark and Merrill Hurst in Portland and at the Alternative High School Program at Meek in Northeast Portland. In fact, I'm in Tom Kane's classroom, so it's odd that you sat us together. I have two children at Rigler, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak to you tonight with my concerns. In June 2011, the school board unanimously approved the Racial Educational Equity Plan and called for, among other things, to shift our practices to see students as individuals. This sounded great to us at Rigler, where students are Hispanic, African-American, Asian, Native American, and white, with up to 12 different language groups represented. Having a plan for equitable education, which considered each student's own particular cultural context and background, was vital. For the past three years, our school has worked to create an environment in which kids can thrive regardless of their home lives, of their socioeconomic status, or of the color of their skin. Tobin Crell with Northwest Resolutions helped implement a restorative justice program designed to keep students in our school community rather than suspending them or expelling them for bad behavior. Our African-American community agent Ivory Nichols has worked together with Tobin to build relationships with kids who need this support. And our student management specialist Jeremy Cohen has worked with both of them to develop plans with students, check in with them daily, and provide them with the outlet and resources they need. This fall, the proposed budget eliminates those positions. Our student management specialist and our African-American community agent will be gone, and the restorative justice program will end. The Equity Plan calls for us to see students as individuals, and I think it might be instructive to look at schools as individual entities as well, to consider the particular needs of each one. Our families deal with immigration issues, unmet mental health issues, and are often refugees from gentrification or from their home countries. Not all of our kids are equipped with everything they need to be prepared to learn. As Nathan mentioned in his testimony, Rigler has no foundation, no ability to hold a quick fundraiser to save teacher positions. The $2,000 to $3,000 we hope to raise at this year's Spring Carnival could be the cost of a school picnic at some of our neighboring schools. Our SMS Mr. Cohen, whose job will be gone in the fall, has a photo on his desk that shows him with a student, both of them wearing neckties, both of them grinning broadly. This is a student who was suspended six different times during his kindergarten year, which was last year. The same student this year is a first grader working with Mr. Cohen, has been suspended zero times. Last year, he was known for running from the class and having explosive outbursts in the hallway. This year, he checks in twice a day and knows that Mr. Cohen's room is the place to go if he feels close to anger. It's also the place he picks up the necktie Mr. Cohen bought him when he feels like dressing up a little. Administration, parents, teachers at Rigler said yes to your Equity Plan, and we built a community together to help support those aims. Now, a vital part of that team will be gone in the fall, and it will be impossible for us to continue as we have been. I ask you, please, to take a closer look at the needs of Rigler Elementary and provide the funding we need to be successful. Thank you so much.
Our next two speakers, Nicole Iroz Elardo and Monique McLean.
Hello, my name is Nicole Iroz Elardo, I-R-O-Z-El-A-R-D-O, and I'm a parent of a student at Scott K-8, which neighbors Rigler, and I'm tempted to throw this out today and just say how much we admire what they are doing and how similar our problems are, and how much we want the FTE to start a restorative justice program. But instead of doing that, I'm going to go on my script and tell you that, that I want to point out that there's a particularly grievous incident where PPS is not reinvesting resources to overcome equity issues, and that is in counseling staff. Scott is a Title I school with over 84% qualifying for free and reduced lunch, 82% are non-white, and 41% are English-language learners, and that includes significant Latino, Somali, and Vietnamese populations. Scott is also designated as a focus school. Focus and priority schools, as we all know, are high-poverty schools that are struggling to meet the achievement levels of other similar high-poverty schools. Oftentimes, this is because a greater proportion of these children have social and emotional needs that must be met in order to support learning in the classroom. In light of this, I was appalled and incredibly disappointed to see that only a half-time counselor has been allotted to support Scott's 497 students in this coming FTE budget. This is in line with your, with the school district's policy of assigning a full-time counselor at 500 students. I'll do the math. We're three short. Scott is also at building capacity, meaning that the school isn't necessarily under-enrolled, even if the likelihood of ever sustaining 500 students is quite small. The situation is incredibly inequitable and makes a mockery of PPS's commitment to address equity. At a school like Scott, the crisis in kids' lives do not neatly schedule themselves around a half-time counselor. A parent losing their job or a sibling arrested does not wait for a counselor to come back for tomorrow. A kid who doesn't have a full fridge at home or is walking home without a coat cannot wait tomorrow to have the counselor show up. The challenges of assimilating into life in the U.S. with many different languages and customs and diversity, which we love at our school, again, does not just only occur on the days in which the counselor is in the school. These children need trusted adults that they can count on being there every single day, and counselors are an important part of that support system. Limiting the counselor to a half-time allotment perpetuates racial and economic inequities by failing to support the social and emotional needs of students that need the support most. The situation at Scott is particularly frustrating because we're only three students short, but other focus and priority schools like Lee with 470, Cesar Chavez with 487, and Rigler with 441 have large schools with, and need that full-time counselor. Focus and priority schools need that, no matter what the size, and the reinvestment should prioritize those populations who need it most. Please provide Scott the FTE to perform, to support a full-time counselor in this budget cycle, and I urge you, as a board, to prioritize focus and priority schools in this year of reinvestment. Thank you.
My name's Monique McLean, M-C-C-L-E-A-N, and I'm here on behalf of the Parents Coalition. A citywide group of parents galvanized last year around ending the practice of mandated part-time high school and restoring instructional minimums. As you consider the proposed budget, we ask that you take these questions into account. Does this budget inform an educational vision, and if so, what is it? Does this budget serve every student in all levels and from every demographic? Does this budget support PPS's compliance, both the letter and the spirit, with the state's minimum instructional hours? Last week, the Parents Coalition requested data and information from PPS around forecasting and staffing by May 1st so that we can evaluate how this budget aligns with providing high school students with a full school day and restore PPS compliance with instructional hour standards. We hope that PPS has also reviewed their instructional hours compliance at all schools. We would be disappointed if there were efforts to pit high schools against elementary or middle schools, as this isn't a zero-sum game. The Parents Coalition has been following the forecasting process carefully. We're pleased that the three proposed schedules for high schools appear to be in compliance with the state law on the number 130 of instructional hours per course, as that deficiency has exacerbated the challenges PPS high schoolers have faced over the past three years. These are promising developments. We remain concerned, however, that these changes are tenuous at best, positioned as vulnerable to other pressures. Given the level of funding PPS has, significantly more than other districts, and all the investments that it's making, we urge, we encourage PPS to achieve minimum instructional hours at elementary, middle, K8s, and high schools, and to stretch for more. Access to public education should be a given, never a luxury. This holds true for all grade levels and all demographics. Let's adopt a budget that infuses an educational vision into every line item and produces outcomes worthy of our great city. Thank you all for your dedication to increasing the value of a diploma from PPS and for your service to our city and its students. Thanks.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Diana Wu.
Good evening. Is this on? Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Diana Pei Wu, W-U, and I'm the Director of Organizing for the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, and I'm here on behalf of both Apano and the Educational Justice Committee of the Coalition of Communities of Color, on which we sit. I'm also here on behalf of our Educational Equity Committee and our Vietnamese and Chinese parents who are members of Apano. We wanted to thank the Portland Public School Board, as well as the staff, for the fabulous implementation of the Vietnamese Dual Language Immersion Program, as well as the expansion of the Mandarin Dual Language Immersion Program, and the plans for the creation of another Chinese Dual Language Immersion Program, which will serve both Cantonese and Mandarin-speaking parents, especially English-language learners in Portland Public Schools in the very near future. We're also super excited for the willingness to try something new and also for funding that, right? The incredible collaboration between Portland Public School staff and the Dual Language Immersion Program and the community-based organizations, including Apano, but not limited to us, but also the other sort of community-specific organizations that exist in Portland. There are dozens of them, and Apano's statewide list has over 80 to 90 community-specific, non-funded community organizations representing Asian and Pacific Islander communities. And so, and also, I don't know if you all know that that model for collaboration, we're exploring being able to share that nationally with other public school administrations. And so, you know, funding that collaboration hopefully will result in new models for community and district collaboration. And finally, we wanted to thank you for your commitment to implementing equitable solutions for some of the most vulnerable members of Portland's communities, including English-language learning students and their families. And also, the Coalition of Communities of Color wants to thank you for your support in developing those collaborations towards equity in our school district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who testified tonight and all of those of you who came to listen to the testimony. We're going to adjourn this public hearing. We have about 15 minutes, so we're happy to mingle among you and talk about any other issues that you might have. Thank you. Couple more board members. See Tom out there. Yep, you do now. This formal meeting of the Board of Education for April 21st, 2014, is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Directors Regan and Morton are both absent this evening. So tonight, we will again honor two of our outstanding partners. I'd like to invite Lorenzo Poe, Chief Equity Officer, and Jay Gutter. Is that right? Jay?
Keider.
Keider, thank you. IT Program Director to the staff table. Sorry, Jay.
Good evening, Chair Knolls and Co-Chair Bilaus, Directors, Superintendent Smith, Lorenzo Poe. It is again a privilege to do our quarterly partnership recognition, where we as a district have the opportunity to recognize some of the district's, literally hundreds of partners, volunteers, committed individuals who support the academic missions of our district. We literally, on a daily basis, these hundreds of people who bring their talent, their resources, and their energy to support what we're doing, some of the most incredible work in the district. So this opportunity for us to recognize several of our individuals tonight is a great honor for our department, and I can tell you this, as I do often when we do partnership recognitions, how important it is for our partners to have the opportunity to be recognized by you. So with that, I will turn it over to So with that, I will turn it over to Jay. He will introduce his partners and talk to you about our first committed partner.
Thank you. My name is Jay Keiter. I am the Acting Director, I'm sorry, I am the Acting Deputy Chief Information Officer for Portland Public Schools. I've had the pleasure of working with Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission for the past nine years across a variety of projects via a variety of strategic initiatives. The Mount Hood Regulatory Commission has been an invaluable partner for Portland Public Schools. In addition to directing the institutional network, their Community Access Capital Grant Program has afforded PPS with grant funding to build out essential infrastructure, as well as seed innovative instructional technologies in our schools, as well as across our various departments. With funding from this partnership, their Community Access Capital Grant Program was able to upgrade over 5,000 phones in our district from legacy rotary dial phones over to state-of-the-art voice-over-IP with voicemail, as well as multiple language options within the autodialer system. It has improved the way that we communicate with our families, as well as how our families can communicate with us. Beginning three years ago, we embarked on a very innovative effort at Roosevelt High School. This is the technology immersion pilot. Without this partnership, this level of innovation would not have been possible in this district. Over the course of these three years, we have provided the staff at Roosevelt High School with some high-value, very rich professional development. We've upgraded the essential infrastructure out at Roosevelt High School and have ensured every single student out at that school has a mobile device to support their own learning. The foundation that we established at Roosevelt has been carried forward and has seeded programs at both Madison and Franklin High School. At those locations, we have pilot efforts underway with the freshman class, with aspirations for expanding those programs, much the way we did at Roosevelt High School. Additionally, our Learning and Credit Options Program has partnered with Mount Hood Cable on a digital transformation project. This is a project that runs concurrent to our efforts at Roosevelt and seeks to build out essential technology and infrastructure systems to support the personalized learning of all students across our district. Aspirationally, what we are looking at is a world-class learning management system, as well as a digital asset management system to support personalized learning goals that this district has going forward. These essential technologies are what it will take to future-proof our organization and prepare our students for the world of work ahead. At this point in time, I would like to bring forward Sue Disciple, who's our MHCRC Chair, and Carol Studeman, who's the MHRC Vice Chair, to say a few words about this partnership.
Welcome to both of you.
Well, thank you. Well, Board Members and Madam Superintendent, thank you so much for inviting us. We're honored to be honored. Just a couple of things. It's been MHCRC's pleasure to get these good grant proposals from the district and to fund the district with two, over $2.2 million of grant funds over the last five years. Going forward, we're launching a long-term initiative that is focused on raising educational outcomes for kids throughout the district. And we're going to be focusing a better part of our funding initiative toward those student achievement outcomes. So we look forward to an ongoing partnership and more millions that we can hopefully make available to the school district. We are really looking forward to the partnership. I guess the only other thing I would say is that, I think that's fairly notable, is that we couldn't do what we do without our support of City Council. We do have one of the best structured franchises with our cable company in the country that does allow us to make these grants into the community, because we've had ongoing political support from our council and a lot of support from Mayor Hales. We're able to continue to do the work. So, thank you so much. And I, my, our Vice Chair, Carol Studeman, would like to make some remarks, too.
Chair Knowles and Board Members and Superintendent Smith, I'm Carol Studeman, and I'm the MHCRC Commissioner that represents Multnomah County. I'm here on behalf of the other jurisdictions that are part of the MHCRC, which includes Gresham Wood Village, Troutdale, Fairview. Yeah, that's it. And on behalf of those other jurisdictions, I look forward to working and developing a deeper relationship with Portland Public Schools and the other school districts that take part in our grant program. And those other districts are Parkrose, Centennial, David Douglas, Reynolds, and Gresham Barlow. So thank you so much for recognizing the work that we're doing. We're really excited about it. When Jay was listing off some of the items that we've done, I nudged Rebecca and said, is this where we start the wave? You know, it's just, it's such exciting work, and we're really pleased to be a part of this, and thank you for having us here tonight.
Well, thank you very much, and we would very much love to be a part of your wave.
Yay!
Thank you. And if you could, if you would come and stand in front of the dius and board members, we'll get up and go around, and then we'll present you with some lovely plaques and have a picture.
Everybody ready? Take one more. Thank you.
Are you trying to get tech support out there?
I called those guys last time I had problems. Turned Verizon around on their ear.
There you go. So we have...
Stalling for 24 hours, called me in about 20 minutes.
Where's Andre? Are you, Andre? Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, good evening, Board Directors. I'm here to recognize one of our longstanding partners, Portland Rose Festival, that has been a partner of PPS for over 100 years, clearly one of our oldest partners that we have here in the city of Portland. About a month ago, I had the privilege to meet Jeff Dick, Executive Director of Portland Rose Festival, and hear the amazing things that Rose Festival has done within our school district and provided our students throughout the district. And it was a no-brainer for me to realize and understand that it's time that we as a district just show our appreciation and all the things that they have done for not only the district staff, but also the students and the parents. And at this time, I would like to have Jeff, the CEO of Portland Rose Festival, say a few words.
Chair Knowles, Board, Superintendent Smith, it's just a privilege to be up here. I always almost said this is 107 years in the making, as we've been working together for a very long time. You know, the Rose Festival Foundation is more than just events. We're a nonprofit with a mission to create and produce event and programs with the focus on arts, education, and volunteerism. You know, history has shown over the years, our events and programs with specific community outreach goals and education elements that are the main ingredients of our success. Whether it's been integration of school projects out in the community or classroom curriculums, the Rose Festival has always been there for our kids. We have, in fact, this year, we showcase kids of all ages, and specifically, we'll see Lincoln High School will be marching in the Starlight Parade, as well as Wilson High School will lead our Grand Furlough Walk amongst lots of kids and integrated junior parade, and on and on and on and on.
Very nice to see Portland represented in the parade.
Couldn't agree more. Couldn't agree more. You know, and those get all the headlines, but there's a lot of things we're doing within our program and events that are more arts-related and talk about different skill sets. For example, our International Youth Silent Film Contest. This takes emerging artists and young filmmakers and pairs them up with professionals in the film industry, where they actually create a three-minute silent movie, and if they're juried and selected, they'll get to show those films at the Hollywood District, at the Hollywood Theater. That's just one of our newer programs. Another newer program is the Rose Festival Sing-Off, where a cappella groups get a chance to perform and some amazing talented groups in our community. Those are just some examples of what we're doing that don't get the headlines. What gets the headlines is the concerts and the parades, but they're all integrated into our kids and certainly into our schools. But nothing is more integrated, nothing is more established, and nothing is more powerful that exemplifies our partnership, since a program that we've been doing since 1930, where we've been selecting a representative from each of Portland High Schools. We've been doing this since 1930. A young woman represents the very best to showcase their community and represent their schools as part of the Rose Festival Court. These are extraordinary women. You're going to chance to meet them in just a minute. But before I do so, I'd like to introduce the volunteer who leads this organization as President of the Rose Festival Foundation, to my left, Todd Johnston. Todd?
Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight. You know, we produce a lot of events, have a large economic impact of over $70 million to the Portland community, but it can't be done without partners like yourself. You know, we have the privilege to work alongside of a lot of volunteers. Personally, there's a 60-member board, along with 3,000 volunteers that make this event just an amazing community event. I'd like to recognize first our Court Chair, Terry Bowles Atherton. Could you please stand, Terry? Along with Terry, we have volunteers and staff who have dedicated thousands of hours, not only to this year's program, but to the last nearly 80 years of programming. And it's amazing what they do for the community and how they shepherd and mentor these young women through, not just this program, but through life. Lifelong contacts have been made through this program. And as been mentioned before, you know, the young women that represent the very best of our community, they're, one from each one of the high schools is here tonight, and it's amazing what they can do, not only just representing their own schools, but the greater Portland area. You know, each student went through a process that included evaluating the GPA, their extracurricular activities, their community involvement, along with going through two judging sessions where they had to give speeches and communicate effectively to result in what we have here tonight. And I'd like to have each one of the girls stand and introduce themselves and where they're from tonight. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Annette Holbato, and I'm a senior at St. Mary's Academy.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Brown, and I am a senior at Parkrose High School.
Hi, my name is Samantha Westmoreland, and I'm a senior at David Douglas High School.
Hi, my name is Teresa Galotti, and I am a senior at Central Catholic High School.
Hello, my name is Amy Whipple, and I'm a senior at Madison High School.
Hi, my name is Taylor Dubnum, and I am a senior at Grant High School.
Hi, I'm Jasmine McKenzie, and I'm a senior at Jefferson High School.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Ariadis Swen, and I'm a junior at Lincoln High School.
Hi, I'm Callie Krevenko, and I'm a senior at Cleveland High School.
Hi, I'm Isabella Rigelman, and I am a junior at Franklin High School.
I'm Marlo Eckert, and I'm a senior at Klenko High School in Hillsborough.
Hello, everyone.
I'm Emma Wyble, and I'm a junior at Wesson High School.
Good evening. My name is Deja Brooks, and I'm a senior at Wilson High School.
Hi, my name is Amelia Ryanville. I'm a senior at Jefferson High School.
Hello, my name is Kiana Serrano, and I'm a junior, and I attend Roosevelt High School.
Thank you.
And I just want to close by just summarizing a little bit about what they represent. In 2012, we did a study and researched all the past princesses since the very beginning and collected data on them, and it's an amazing group. And what's really important is what they've done with their lives. 74% of them graduated from college. These are all going back all the way to 1930. And most recent, the last 20 years, the college graduation rate is 97% of these young women. And they're doing great things in their community. They're lawyers, they're doctors, they're teachers and educators. All past princesses and some of those experiences are generated from both the classroom and what they do through the Rose Festival program. And a lot of them end up right back here in Portland. Over 70% of them actually moved back here after they've gone off to college and really do amazing things in this community. So with that said, I want to thank you as the Board, Andre and his team, for this opportunity to be up here. Thank you very much.
And I, on behalf of the Board, thank you for your partnership with us. Love the Rose Festival, love the parade, but like you said, many other benefits to the community from your organization. Particularly interested in hearing more about the a cappella night. And again, very excited to see that Portland Public Schools will be represented in the parades this year. So if you'd both come up front. And any other comments, Board Members?
Princesses coming up?
Thank you, yep.
Are they coming up, too?
Sure, come on up! Want your picture with the princesses? You got it. Okay. That's really, that's really nice, isn't it? Okay, our next agenda item, we get to call up another wonderful partner of Portland Public Schools. Dan Ryan, the Executive Director, for All Hands Raised, would like to come forward and present your report to us and allow us to thank you so much for the work that you do on behalf of the district.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith and Co-Chairs Bilal and Pam Knowles. How are you? Thank you for your service. Seems really, there's not a lot, oh. Director Kohler's coming back. Okay. And two people are gone. Anyway, it's good to be here.
A small intimate group tonight.
Yeah, the dream team, yeah. It's always hard to follow Rose Festival princesses. Did you see the way they posed?
Sorry, Dan.
Yeah, that's all right. They've been through worse. Anyway, it's great to be here, and you know, sometimes it's framed, let's just be honest, as an unnecessary evil, where the parent community puts in so many volunteer hours to raise funds, to buy back some positions in the schools, buy back faculty and teachers. And it started a long time ago. I mean, people, you know, it's starting to feel ancient when you talk about ballot measure five, but that was, there was a reaction to that. And actually, the schools' foundation was built expressly to manage that money, because it was all this money was coming in. It was coming in from the parent communities that could raise that kind of money, and then the schools that didn't have a parent community like that were not able to. So it's always good to have that history, because in Portland Public Schools, which is still the national practice for how to do this unnecessary evil that goes on throughout the country, there isn't one city in the country that doesn't deal with this. We're the only ones that have an equity system in place.
We're the only ones that have an equity system in place, so that one-third of the money that's raised actually goes into the equity fund. And then we have the pleasure at All Hands Raised, the Portland Public Schools Foundation, to make sure that it's executed, implemented, the policy, with the integrity and efficacy that was founded upon. So it's our pleasure to always uphold that duty, and so we're here to just celebrate that this evening. I wanted to introduce who's up here at the podium with me. We have over here, we have Principal Peyton Chapman from Lincoln High School. We have Ms. Glazer from Alameda Foundation, yes. And we have Levert Robertson. He's the principal at Cesar Chavez. And we'll get to your stories in a moment, but we wanted to give you just an overview of what's happened this past year. Is this how you, is this, this, cool. All right, that's who's up here. There we go. So it was a record year. The fundraising that took place, and there's a fundraising that took place a year ago, was at 4.1 million. And of that, 118 teachers and staff were, of course, that was supplemented by these funds. And this takes place at 44 active foundations throughout the district. And again, I mentioned that this is the largest equity fund in the history of the Foundation, so it's by far the biggest amount of investment that we've been able to give out to the schools. Forty-seven awards were announced, and we also give awards to, in proportion to the alternative programs. And that's based on proportion of how many kids go to the alternative schools. And the awards range from 14,000 to the smaller alternative schools, to 20,000 to 40,000. Twenty is the number that we received over and over again from principals, that giving them anything less than that was really difficult to work with. So that's why that numbers, we select that number. And we did inform the principals of this decision prior to spring break, so they could have a chance to actually reflect on their staffing model and your budget process. It's a formula that we uphold. It's a conversation that took place several years ago, where we wanted to come up with data that everyone could agree upon and how to measure that. So in the school demographic side, we look at what that says of students in poverty is weighted at 50%. Students of color are weighted at .25, and then English language learners at .25. There were a lot of conversations that went into this being a fair and equitable way to do that. Then we look at the finances, and as you can see, that goes into the number of students that are in a school. And that looks at the formula in terms of the revenue side. We do count Title I money, but at 33 cents to the dollar, and the rest are at exact dollar figures. And then that puts together the school rankings. Then we make those tough decisions. Look where there's breaks. Look where there's not just one digit deciphering between 40,000 and 35, and 20,000 and a cutoff. So we look for where there's patterns, and that's where we come up with our decisions. And we do this collectively with a team from PPS. This is just kind of a snapshot of the work that's been going on and the trajectory of growth, actually. A lot of this is because the parent community in PPS is just so organized. And there's where the number of 4.1 million, there you can see the investment in equity funds. And then it gets down to exactly how that impacts the staffing model in PPS. And this is kind of inside baseball, but we just like to say that a lot of our work is stewardship work, and it's 15,000 business transactions. There's a lot of activities, a lot of auctions, that have a lot of vendors. So we basically cut a lot of checks for this volunteer group. And we're happy to always report that there's zero, this costs zero dollars, and that's something that we do. But when you go to New Seasons Market, I mean, I have a plug for them. They have this little area that says "Cans for Kids," and when you put your return cans and bottles in there, that's kind of how we pay the rent to do this work. So give some love to New Seasons and return your bottles and cans, if you will. That was fun to do. Let's see if there'll be an uptick because of that commercial. So anyway, I want to do right now is, um... What's that? Oh. It's the highest, yeah, it's big. Blazers aren't playing tonight. I'm sure it's real big tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to the guests that are here, but before I do that, I just want to acknowledge the team at PPS and the accounting office. They don't get a lot of love, because they're, you know, they're accountants. They're up there in one of those cubicles working away. But Sherri Lee and David, is it Schickel? That's the guy. See, Carol and I talk about this, Superintendent Smith and I talk about this several times a year, but it's really people like David and Sherri that really pull this off. Karina Wolf, who put her attention towards this to make sure that the alternative grants were really fair. And then we also, and my team, I have Rosemary Schwimmer here, who's the rep, our team that is the liaison with all of the parent leaders throughout PPS. And then another person who has been on my team for four and a half years, and he's actually moving on to another chapter, but that's the CFO of the Schools Foundation, John Driesen. And he's been behind all of the details to make sure this is all, it's just all, it all makes sense and that the data is accurate. John, stand up. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the guest, and I'm going to actually move over and have you sit here, Peyton. And...
Good evening, Superintendent Smith and Board members. It's really nice to see the Rose Festival princesses. They're really talented human beings. I didn't understand that when I moved to Portland initially, but after 15 years of seeing just incredibly talented, dedicated young women strive and thrive through that program, it's really an honor to see them here as well. I remember first learning about the Portland Schools Foundation before it became All Hands Raised, when I was a vice principal at Madison High School, and used to working on big grants, like Gates Grants, and I was really proud of the work that we did there around equity and equality of opportunity and access and outcomes. And I'm equally proud of the work that the Lincoln Foundation is doing and the foundations at other schools, because I'm really here representing all those schools that worked so hard to raise that money and through auctions and phone banking and house parties and just the list goes on and on of what parents and communities do to be a part of the equity work. So I'm proud that eight years ago, the Lincoln Foundation was raising about $200,000 a year, a third of which was then given to the Portland Schools Foundation. And over that time, we've raised that number during the hardest economy, during really bad economic times, to about $500,000, where we're able to give a significant third away to be one of the largest donors to All Hands Raised. And we're really excited to do that work. We feel great about it. We've really made it transparent that we don't keep 100% at Lincoln, and that that's been a real plus. And it's that transparency and commitment to equity that's helped inspire more than double the amounts of giving. And thrilled that that money is going across our district to students and schools who can really benefit, and also to East County partners. We're really, really following the lead that you all are setting around equity and appreciate your leadership and the opportunity to help. So I'm, I could, you know, list the parent leaders, but I'm very thankful to our foundation and their commitment to all kids and equity. Thank you.
And none of this would happen without the parent volunteers, and we have Erica from the Alameda School Foundation to give some parent voice to this conversation.
Hi, my name is Erica Coglin Glazer, and I'm just one of many parents that volunteer our time for raising FTE. And what's great about how the money is distributed, just what they were saying, is that when we go and ask parents to donate to the school, we're saying, "Two-thirds of it will stay with your children, but one-third will help our entire city," which I think is a really great way to get people to realize it's not just about our neighborhood, it's about Portland as a whole. So that's it. Thanks.
My name is Levert Robertson, Principal of Cesar Chavez School. It's definitely an honor to be here tonight, and special thanks to Steve for coming out and visiting the school, along with Dan Ryan today. I guess what I would like to talk about is some of the benefits from all the funding that you guys have been able to raise. And at our school, it's really created access and opportunity for our students to things that they may have never dreamed about. This year, we had a snowboarding club through the Snowboarding Outreach Society. Many of those students have never thought about snowboarding, and once they became a part of the club, they really learned a lot about teamwork. In addition, we believe in, or in addition, we believe in sports and activities that connect students. This year, we started a boys' and girls' basketball team for many of our at-risk eighth graders. And it was absolutely amazing. Many of the students never played organized sports, ever, and so this was their first opportunity, and they found out that it was more than just I and sports, and it was more or less team. And they learned how to build each other up and support each other, to the point where seven out of 10 of our young men who played on the basketball team had a GPA above a 3.0. Our entire girls' basketball team, I believe their cumulative GPA was a 3.5, and it did wonders for those students who sometimes struggled with attendance. So thank you guys for all the work that you do, and hopefully we're doing a good job spending your money.
So this is how it works. This is why it's a national example. In fact, we were invited to go to Austin, Texas, two weeks ago, and someone from my staff went there and helped their school board understand what we were doing in PPS. They're kind of overwhelmed with how we ever got to four votes, if you will, on such an issue. But they're, and that's usually when people hang up the phone, when they realize it has to be a school board policy. So anyway, your colleagues years ago made the right decision, and thank you for upholding that work. Any questions?
Comments, Board members? Director Buell?
I consider Dan a friend of mine, even though he beat me for the school board way back in 2006. And I find it odd, I do have a question, but before, I have a comment. I find it odd, you're a well-known personality in town. You really are a man who people admire and like, and I like you. But I find it odd that I'm allowed to ask you a question, but I'm not allowed to ask a question of a woman who's sitting here crying over her child and over Riggler School and the difficulties, and I'm not allowed to ask, I'm not allowed to ask a question of them. And so I just find that very odd. And I know you were on the school board, and I would imagine you would find that odd too, from your days, because that's not the way it's been for the last 30 years in Portland. My question is, you've got, how much of your budget, how much is your budget for the people that you hire versus, you have $4.1 million through the School Foundation, and how much, how much is your other budget? And none of that comes from the School Foundation. I just want you to maybe just kind of outline your budget for people who are watching, so they understand it.
Oh, absolutely. So the 4.1 that comes in is a temporary restricted account, so all of that money goes right back into the classrooms. And then after that, there's a 1.2 million that All Hands Raised raises private funds so that we can do the partnership work in Monoma County, the system change work that we're doing from birth to career. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, there's a, there's a division between the two.
Right.
I just like to have people understand that, because it makes a lot of sense.
And the operation funds to basically run this full-service, hopefully friendly and accurate bank for all of the parent volunteers is subsidized by New Seasons Market, by Roy Fund, a private fund at the Oregon Community Foundation, and the Demerus Family Foundation. And then last, but definitely not least, proceeds from the annual roast event that we just put on back in March.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other comments? Director Alile, excuse me.
I just want to say thank you all for being here this evening. And I just want to again emphasize the appreciation, not only for the organization for making sure that it is accurate accounting and that there's a transparency in how these funds are brought in and brought out. But I also really want to thank our parents. Our parents go through extraordinary efforts, and they spend a lot of time putting on these events, organizing the events, raising the funds for funds that really should be coming out of tax dollars. So I just, I can't say it enough. I would love for us, because I believe that our parents would love to actually split 50/50, the money they raise, but in times when our state isn't investing in what they're supposed to do. You said this grew out of Measure 90, and unfortunately, it is a time when we're measuring Measure Five, sorry, in 1990.
In the 90s, yeah.
Right? That I hope that it doesn't become forgotten past, that this is just the way it normally is, that we need to continue to raise that as an issue, so that these dollars can actually go towards more enrichment, rather than folks being up here in tears because they don't have the supports at their school that they need. But this makes a huge impact in the families and the, because everybody is stretching. There are no families that I come across that are just living comfortably and well within their means and just have money to throw away. So I just want to thank the parents and thank you as an organization, and remind us as a community that it shouldn't be a necessary evil. So...
I thank you for that, Director Alile, because I'm also really proud of our community, because we're not fundraising to get extra teachers. We're funding, fundraising to try and lower some of the largest overall loads that teachers at schools, large comprehensives, have. So we're no longer fundraising foundations to have something more than what other schools have. We're fundraising to try and get as much staffing as we're able to put into schools. So we're...
That's true for Alameda as well. In fact, we actually depleted all of our foundation funds, every last cent. We were down to zero, and we still were short a reading specialist, a math specialist, and the kindergarten aides all went home at 11:15 in the morning, which left kindergarten teachers with 28, 30 children, and no other adults in the classroom. So our fundraising, even at maybe some of the schools that have more funds, is actually trying to get us back to where we were years ago. I wish we could say, I wish I could say we were raising money for foreign language and arts and music, but we're not. We spend all of our FTE on classroom teachers or specialists that are needed.
And it has a tendency to set up this dynamic where schools, as we've heard earlier, right, are still losing FTE, and they have very severe needs, and they're looking at schools like you, saying, "In some ways, you're being able to offset those," and everybody's just struggling to keep their head above water. And again, I think this is really an issue about tax reform and statewide, how do we fund this? But that being said, organizations that step up and say, "We can, we can do something to hold back the water for a while," and parents who are working really hard to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you doing the Great City Schools Report during your student report, or are you doing it with me? You're doing it with me? Okay. All right. Me first, then you, or, okay? All right, whatever. Yeah. Come on, Mina. Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Get my glasses. Which is a conference report on the Council of Great City Schools, where I am a board member and a member of the executive committee. And so just a short report on the, what happened at the last meeting. On March 21st to 25th, a delegation from PPS attended the Council of Great City Schools Legislative Conference in Washington, DC. With me were PPS Government Relations Director David Williams, PPS Strategic Communications Director John Isaac, Student Representative Andrew Davidson, Abby Passion, who is also the student body president at Roosevelt, and Mina J.S. Wall, who is the editor of the Lincoln Cardinal Times, and who is sitting up here in front of us. Oh, excuse me, and Director Greg Alile. Sorry.
Point of order?
Yes.
I don't remember voting for Director Alile to go.
Yeah, yes, we did. You missed that.
Four votes? I wasn't here or something?
You were here. You were here.
I voted for Greg Alile to go?
Yes, you did.
When was that? What was the date? Do you know?
We'll get back to you later, but that's...
Can you send me the, could you send me the video of that?
I'm sure Ms. Houston can handle that. Thank you. You bet. Okay, so these students actively participated in the conference. Abby had the opportunity to question Secretary of Education Arnie Duncan about how he is informed about student voice, and all three of the students assisted us in our lobbying efforts with the Oregon delegation, including a personal visit with Senator Merkley and Representative Bonamici. Council of Great City Schools represents about 67 urban school districts in the United States, which means about 6.9 million students. Of those, about 70% are eligible for free and reduced lunch, 80% are children of color, and 19% speak English as a second language. The topics of this meeting, again, it was a legislative meeting, were on two major themes. One was the inability of Congress to act on the Reauthorization of the Education for All Students Act, which has been going on for a very long time. And the second was maintaining the funding for urban school districts, increasing allocations to education from the sequestration add-backs, maintaining current calculations for Title I funding, increasing funding for special education above the current rate of 20% to the amount promised by Congress when it was enacted, which is 40%. And then some discussion about the possibility of additional funding for Perkins Grants, which what we use for career technical education. The Board of Directors for the Council and its executive committee, both of which I'm a member, discussed a couple... a member, discussed a couple of additional issues. The first of those being Common Core State Standards. This discussion centered on professional development for teachers and communications with parents in the community about the Common Core State Standards, including issues around it's not a curriculum, requires students to master critical thinking skills and demonstrate those on their tests. We reviewed several sample tests and answers. Students were, students are graded not only on reaching the correct answer, but also showing how they got that answer. These are the critical thinking skills that our students must have to be successful in today's workplace. The Council also provided communication materials, including PSAs, parent roadmaps in several different languages. And the other issue that was covered by the executive committee was that of testing. I mentioned before in my last review of my last meeting at the Council in the fall that there was a lot of discussion around how much testing is being done in schools and raised serious concerns by many districts. In response to that, the Council is going to be surveying all Council members, all those schools to gather information about every kind of test that is currently being done by each district. And this information will then be shared with other districts and the, and the discussion about the amount of testing that's happening in our schools will then be reviewed by Council members and a resolution brought forward. So, it was all in all a really wonderful trip. I'm not going to steal Andrew's thunder about all the things that the students did. I think he's going to talk a little bit about that and Mina may add into that, so. But very worthwhile for us, very helpful for us to be able to visit with our congressional delegation. We actually visited with either staff members or the actual member, for all of the members of our delegation here in the Portland region, with both senators and three reps, three representatives. So, very, very successful trip for us. Andrew.
Yeah, thank you. So, I'll let Mina jump in whenever she wants to, but some of the things that I was really struck by on the trip were, you know, here in PPS, a lot of times we look at the federal things and we look at the state things, but it was really cool for me to be able to talk to other superintendents, board members and staff members from districts outside of Oregon and the issues they're dealing with in their, you know, actual states themselves. And then, you know, what's, how things are moving across the nation and trends that are happening outside of Oregon. It was really, really interesting. We got to talk to superintendents and staff members from other districts that were really interested in what we were doing as students there on the conference. So, we talked to them about Super SAC, we talked to them about our student feedback forms that we've been working on for a while now, you know, things like that, they were really interested in. They were really happy that we were there, actually. I don't think we met anyone on the trip that was upset that we were there, so that was good. But yeah, it was, it was a really great opportunity for all of us to meet with our elected officials and really have that dialogue with them about, you know, what's important to us. And not many students get to do that, you know, meet in their offices and talk to them about that. So, it was really a unique opportunity.
Yeah, we had a really great discussion with the superintendent from another school who's now actually going to take the idea of Super SAC back to her district and make it a thing. She thought it was really interesting, the way that we added student voice and that's something that she was looking towards bringing to her district. And overall, we all felt as students that we just got a good perspective about where Portland Public Schools is and how we can improve things that other school districts are doing well and keep improving the things that we are doing well.
Yeah. So, yeah, oh, were you going to say something? Oh, okay.
Are you done?
No, I mean, it was just, you know, a couple of other things. It was, it was good to actually, you know, like I said, have that experience in the actual offices of the elected officials, you know, and talk to them. Abby got to speak to Arnie Duncan, which was really great. We're hoping to get him out here so that he can, you know, look at some of our focus priority schools. And we got to actually learn a lot at the conference, which was really awesome because, you know, a lot of times we talk on the board, you know, using acronyms and stuff and there's a lot to learn, especially at the federal level when it gets, you know, even that much more complicated. So, it was nice to be able to hear them spelling things out for us, you know, really, I learned a lot and I'm sure Abby and Mina did as well, so. Yeah.
Well, I also have to say that we were very well represented by all of you. They did a fabulous job and it was a pleasure to have them along and to provide that student voice for our representatives. Made a tremendous difference when we were speaking to them about a variety of issues. And all of these student representatives that were with us spoke up and were very clear about the concerns that they had about our education system in the United States right now. They did an absolutely phenomenal job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming along. And I should say, it's the first time students have ever gone to the conference and they were quite a hit with most of the superintendents and other board members who were there. And again, just as Mina said, pointing out the things that we're doing here in Portland Public Schools that many of them took, will take back to their district and try and implement. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions for these guys? Okay, great. Thank you, Mina. Okay, next on our agenda, student testimony. Ms. Hewson, do we have any students?
We do not.
Okay. Do you have something? Okay.
Yeah.
More? Okay. Student Representative Davidson, can we have your report?
Thank you. Superintendent Smith and fellow board members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you all tonight. Last Wednesday, we heard what I thought was a fascinating discussion about Common Core State Standards and Smarter Balanced Assessment. After said discussion, I feel that many of us are in more similar positions on this topic than we realize and I would like to see us talk through the issues both as a board and with the community so that we may appropriately address this issue in a way that is best for the students of Portland. I recognize the fact that we have many things we still need to do, that time is of great value and that we cannot stop everything for a single issue. However, in this case, I think it would be especially sagacious of us to really stop and consider what is best for our students and how many changes to the current, and how any of the changes to the current system will improve education. At the meeting last Wednesday, comments were also made about the need for a community conversation around Common Core and standardized testing, including smarter balanced assessments. I believe students are the most appropriate people to convene this conversation. So, next Thursday, May 1st, at 7:00 PM here in the board auditorium at the BESC, Super SAC will be hosting a forum on standardized testing and Common Core State Standards. The members of Super SAC acknowledge the complexity of this topic, which is why we hope that everyone, regardless of their current knowledge, will attend in the interest of becoming better educated and hearing what other members of the community are saying. We will have question and answer time with a panel representing different stakeholders, including parents, teachers and students. I know it'd be easiest for all of us to simply let things fall into place. However, I would like to see something different from us. We were not elected to just watch things happen despite how out of control things like Common Core often seem to us. I am pleased with the initiative to draft a letter to the state regarding our concerns, but I fear that it will not be met with the type of reception that many of us would like. We were elected as stewards for our students and community and in this instance, I think it at least means having a serious conversation with our community. I'm not interested in going at this alone. This board showed remarkable strength and unity during contract negotiations with PAT this year. If we can stand so well against our employees and people within our own community, I see no reason for us to cower and stand down now. I appreciate Director Buell's attempt to pass the resolution he has drafted. Bringing a legitimate policy debate to the board is an admirable move and it's something I hope we can discuss. We are all on the same team. We want what is best for students and together we can achieve it. This board has, in the past, made decisions in the best interests of students, which at the time were groundbreaking. I think now is the time for another moment of creativity and ambition, which will once again place PPS at the forefront of educational conversations. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak and on behalf of the students of PPS, thank you for serving on this board.
Thank you, Andrew. Or Representative Davidson. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to public comment. Ms. Hewson? I'm sure we, I know we have people signed up for public comment.
We do. We have six. Our first two speakers are Joshua Curtis and Bill Porter.
And I'm not sure if you were all here when we did the budget instructions for public comments, so I'll just give an abbreviated part for that, including, you'll have a total of three minutes. For the first two minutes, there'll be a green light, in the last minute, a yellow light, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and we ask you to please wrap up your comments at that time. And we also ask that, or we will not respond to your comments or questions at this time, but board staff may follow up afterwards and we appreciate you coming forward and giving testimony. Thank you very much.
As co-chair of the Board of Our Portland Our Schools, I'm delivering a message to you since none of our other board members could make it here tonight. Dear Superintendent Smith and Portland Public School Board members, on behalf of our Portland Our Schools, we want to inform you of our disappointment in the district's process for determining a new high school schedule for the 2014-2015 school year. Then could not even drive on the new PPS teacher contract before the district violated the basic tenet of working collaboratively with PPS teachers to determine high school conditions that work best for our students. It is exceedingly frustrating and discouraging to once again have the superintendent tell parents and community members that the administration is soliciting teacher input in the development of the 2014-15 high school schedule, only to learn from teachers that you've only, that they have only been allowed cursory input. In early March, high school principals presented their teachers with three district-generated schedules proposed to meet the state's 130-hour instructional requirement. Despite concerns that have been raised with the six-of-eight schedule based on the experience over the last few years, as well as the potential violation of new teacher contract workload provision, it appears the district has decided to maintain the six-of-eight schedule. Given the backlash PPS received when the district adopted the high school schedule changes without meaningful collaboration in 2011, it is mind-boggling that the district would be so quick to repeat the same mistake. Teachers have presented schedule options that, based on their experience, better serve the educational needs of our students. However, there is no indication the district is taking such teacher input into serious consideration in their decision-making process. Parents are only hearing the district's version of the high school schedule development process, if anything at all, and therefore unable to make fully informed decisions about what is best for their students and advocate accordingly. This is not, writing quite frankly, a dereliction of the district's duty to provide Portland students with the best education possible, given the resources available. There are too many unanswered and unheard stakeholder voices for the district to be rushing into the decision for next year's high school schedule. The district should recognize that adequately involving teachers, parents and students does not merely mean informing them of decisions and listening to their complaints, but to bring them into the decision-making process. Our Portland Our Schools respectfully request that you restart the 2014-15 high school scheduling process to involve those most familiar with the pros and cons of the five of seven and six of eight and block versus modified block schedules that have been placed over the past four years, principals, teachers, students and parents of current high school seniors, as well as high school, middle school, students and parents who will be living with your decision and will have, and should have the opportunity to observe and provide public comment on any proposals that influence, that lead to a board's final decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you tonight. My name is Bill Porter and I'm a parent of two public school students in Portland, a first grader and a sixth grader. I've actually never attended a school board meeting before. I've assumed that all of you are elected and spend countless hours studying the issues and reaching the best decisions, but I fell off my chair when I watched the proceedings last week of your meeting and saw the document that Director Buell proposed about the Common Core standards. And it motivated me to come down here tonight. Setting aside the unhelpful representations and half-truths in that document, I wanted you to know that I'm excited about the new Common Core standards and the smarter balanced assessment. And from my conversations, I think most parents and teachers in Portland are as well. I've actually read the standards and I'm excited about the expectations they have for my kids. I'm excited about how the math standards actually ask teachers to focus on a few things every year so they can slow down and go deep and really make sure kids are mastering the content. I'm excited about the English and language art standards and how they focus on text and really understanding what the author is writing about and asking kids to write from the text and use the evidence. You know, I've actually taken the practice items from the smarter balanced assessment and I'm excited about how much better that assessment is over Oakes. It's not a multiple choice test like Oakes. It's going to require a lot more writing, a lot more problem solving. It's going to ask kids to pull different content areas together. How terrific. You know, look, in our society, we're always going to have expectations for what students ought to be learning in school and we're going to have to have tests that measure how things are going. It's not productive, I think, as Director Buell suggests, that we shouldn't have standards and assessments at all. Our focus should be on making sure they're the best and supporting teachers and students to succeed with them. And I believe the standards, the Common Core standards and the smarter balanced are the, are much better than what we have in Oregon right now. How great that we'd have common standards with lots of other states so that we could actually make sure our kids are prepared for wherever they leave, wherever they go after they graduate. How great to have standards that are updated to reflect 21st century learning skills. It would be a shame to choose the direction that Director Buell proposes. Essentially, what Director Buell, I think, is saying in his proposal is, hey, teachers, thanks for all your hard work the last three years. We appreciate you staying up late to kind of think about how your instruction might need to change. Thanks for researching those lessons, but you know what? We've changed your mind. Never mind. Or even better yet, the proposal suggests, let's actually withhold support and professional development from teachers during this time of transition. Let's let teachers flounder and set our children up for failure with these standards and assessments. I don't think you all have done enough as a school district to support teachers the last three years, but the conversation you know how to be having is, so what are you going to do about it at this point? Many other districts around the country have done much more. What can you learn from them? What are the bumps in the road that you should be anticipating and how can you navigate them? This isn't going to be easy. Change never is, but that doesn't mean we should abandon ship. So, that's the resolution I would like to see and I would love to be helpful in any way that I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Bruce Scherer and Katie Zeknik.
I had a handout thing for the board members. Would I, can I give that to you?
Just go ahead and give it to Ms. Hewson, she'll give it to all of us or Carol can pass it down. Either way.
Good evening, board members, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you. My name's Katie Zeknik and I'm a student in Beaverton and I'm currently working on a project to reduce carbon emissions in schools around the area. My goal is for schools to reduce the amount of meat that is served in cafeterias as the production of meat and beef in particular is environmentally harmful. I hope that Portland Public Schools will participate in my project by ordering more vegetarian options and less meat from food service providers. Ultimately, my hope is that schools would serve entirely vegetarian food, but that's a pretty drastic change, so my proposal would be that Portland serve vegetarian options at least once a week. Basically, replacing meat-intensive meals with vegetarian alternatives is the simplest way to reduce carbon emissions. Portland has already made significant efforts to reduce their carbon footprint by purchasing local food through the Farm to Schools program. Implementing an entirely vegetarian diet would reduce carbon emissions by another 1,450 tons a year for the district. As you can see on the chart, on the handout, switching from a meat-intensive diet and just reducing the amount of beef you eat reduces an individual's carbon emissions by more than half a ton. In addition to environmental benefits, there are many health benefits for students. Vegetarians have significantly lower risk of developing diseases such as heart disease, certain cancers, diabetes and obesity. I think this is an important issue. The main obstacles, I think, are cost and public opinion. The cost of implementing a vegetarian diet would actually likely be less expensive as beef is one of the more expensive food groups per pound to purchase. And I think that you can still offer diverse options even through a vegetarian diet as there are lots of, lots of, lots of options for students to choose from. So, basically, I believe the environmental and health benefits of implementing a vegetarian diet greatly outweigh the challenges for the district and I just hope that the board considers this information and discusses potential programs to reduce meat consumption with the nutrition services. If you'd like more information, my email is on the sheet and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Scherer, first name B-R-U-C-E, last name S-C-H-E-R-E-R. I'm a parent at MLC where the problems the last three years continue to compound and become increasingly bizarre and regressive, but I'm not here to talk about MLC. I'm here to talk about the word rigor and also rigorous. Rigor. Rigor is a horrible word for schools, yet many school administrators used it at the board meeting last week. It connotes that the problems with schools is that people are goofing off. But the real problem in our schools is student poverty. We can't nag people out of poverty. We can't get students out of poverty by narrowing their school curriculum. We can't get students out of poverty by building expensive testing-only computer labs like at my local high school, Roosevelt. It takes more work than that. A definition of rigor, if you look in any dictionary, shows how contemptible it is for schools. Rigor, strictness, severity or harshness, as in dealing with people. Rigor, the full or extreme severity of laws, rules, et cetera. Rigor, severity of living conditions, hardship- Rigor: severity of living conditions, hardship, austerity, the rigor of wartime existence. Rigor: a severe or harsh act, circumstance, et cetera. I ask our school administrators to use better words than rigor to describe what is needed. We deserve schools based on proven practices and research, not based on Charles Dickens. That's it.
Thank you.
Our last two speakers, Jonathan Hunt and Nadia Abdullah. No, I guess not. Okay. Thank you to everybody who provided testimony. If you make sure you have your contact information with the board clerk, Ms. Houston. Okay, at this time, we were going to move on to our next agenda item, which is contract amendments. I'll have to recess the board from its regular meeting and convene the board as the local Contract Review Committee. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would, and I'll invite Emily Cornage, our contracts director, to come up and provide the report, along with Toni Magliano, our chief operating officer.
Co-chairing, board members, and Superintendent Smith. My name's Emily Cornage. I am the Contract Process Manager and Deputy Clerk for the District, also interim program Director of Purchasing and Contracting. As Carol said, I'm here with Toni Magliano, Chief Operating Officer. We are here this evening to recommend that the board adopt resolutions that will authorize amendments to two public improvement contracts that were awarded in accordance with intermediate procurement procedures based upon competitive quotes. Our public contracting rules allow intermediate public improvement contracts to be amended only up to an aggregate contract price of 50% over the original contract price. Because we are seeking to amend the contracts to a total price that is above that 50% threshold, we must request an exemption from competitive bidding requirements. Under our public contracting rules, the board may grant exemptions only after a properly noticed public hearing held by the Contract Review Board. Staff publish notice of tonight's public hearing on April 7th in the Daily Journal of Commerce as required by our rules. The first public improvement project at issue was the installation of a dance studio at Oakley Green School. The contract was awarded, based on lowest competitive quote, in the amount of $11,749. Due to unforeseen circumstances, including a more involved flooring installation process than reasonably anticipated based on manufacturer advice, the resulting total estimated contract price is not to exceed $23,200, a price that is still well within the intermediate procurement limits. The second public improvement project at issue was the replacement of a retaining wall at the playground at Beach Elementary. That contract was awarded, also based on lowest competitive quote, for $58,506. The amount of work required to replace the retaining wall increased significantly because, first of all, the actual soil content was different from that indicated by initial test borings, triggering significant additional engineering requirements. And secondly, there was significant rainfall during the project, causing soil migration and additional work to remove mud from the construction area. The necessary additional work resulted in a total estimated contract price not to exceed $162,500. It is our recommendation that you approve these resolutions, because amendment of the existing contracts is necessary to complete the work in the least costly and most efficient manner. Both projects involved unusual circumstances that are unlikely to be repeated. The scope of work was not dramatically increased, nor the deliverables substantially changed. What changed was the amount of work and materials necessary to safely and thoroughly complete the projects and deliver the finished project -- product, given the existence of circumstances different from those expected. Toni Magliano is here if you have any questions about the projects and change orders at issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The board has two resolutions to consider for this item. I'll begin with the board considering Resolution 4905, which is the resolution to authorize the contract amendment for Oakley Green Dance Studio project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Director Atkins moves, and Director Belial seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4905. Ms. Houston, public comment?
No, there's none.
Okay. Board discussion on the resolution.
Can we still ask questions here? Please, people?
This is board discussion. Would you like to ask a question?
Yes.
Director Buell?
Toni, go over again, what was the change in the dance studio? What caused the change? The other one's mudslides, kind of, correct? I mean, did they figure -- didn't they figure out?
Let's stick with the dance studio first, please.
I'll just ask my question, since I'm -- really, you're not an arbitrator of my questions. Sorry. Go ahead.
So at Oakley Green, a number of things. The floor actually cost more than what the original bid came in at. So, you know, as a large contracting agency, this is a small business. The district has the option to pass -- to essentially tell the contractor that it's all on you. You figure it out, or we work with them and mediate a cost that we feel doesn't sink the small business and still we get value out of the installation. But there were other things that caused that project to go up in costs involved in, you know, it was the merger of or the moving of kids from -- students from Chief Joe to Oakley Green. There were things that building staff were required to do that they didn't do, that the contractor had to turn around and do the work, and we had to pay for those things at Oakley Green.
And the other one was tripled?
So at Beach, we have a safety situation.
Beach is not on the floor right now. We're just discussing the dance studio. When we get to Beach, you can go ahead and ask that one, okay? When we're at that resolution. So any other questions about Oakley Green and the dance studio?
No, that's what we need to do to finish the job.
Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 4905. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 4905 is approved by a vote of five to zero, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Great. So the board will now consider Resolution 4906, Resolution Authorized Contract Amendment, Beach Elementary School Retaining Wall. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Director Belial moves, and Director Curler seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4906. Ms. Houston, no citizen comment? Is there board discussion? Director Buell?
So I remember the question.
I don't. So would you go ahead?
I figured you did.
Would you go ahead and repeat your question?
It tripled? That's my question.
So at Beach, we have a quite large and long retaining wall that runs along the east side of that building that's failing. It's a safety issue. We had an engineer do estimates on what it would -- what the original scope was, which required us to take bore samplings, because the method that we were using, you actually are augering in these long augers, and then you bolt the wall to it to hold it in place. So what's required is tension or torque in the soil. Well, when we used the length of the auger that they recommended, we didn't get the required torque necessary to hold that wall in place, which required us drilling, I think, 11 more and adding a significant amount of length to those augers. And in the meantime, it also rained there and filled in the previous holes. So that's, you know, this is where, you know, this procurement rule is disadvantaged -- is a disadvantage for us, because we can't just allow the contractor to complete the work because it's going to exceed our procurement thresholds, so we have to stop work. Or we could have completely stopped work, went out and rebid to another contractor, which is also pretty laborious, so we're here before the board to allow that work to go forward and complete.
Now, can I -- you're going to let me follow up on my question? Do I have to wait for a new question?
Sure. If you have another question, happy to have you.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Director Buell?
So is it possible that some -- how many people approximately -- how many companies approximately bid on that?
Oh, I don't know how many originally bid on that.
You think it was 10 or three?
The original cost was $60,000.
I'm trying to ask a question that someone in the audience might be asking.
Yeah, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Let's say it was seven?
It was at least three, minimums three for that.
So is it possible, in your opinion, that somebody who bid on that had that all figured out? I mean, see what I'm saying? You know, so they bid 100 and we're ending up at 168,000, and they figured, "This isn't going to be a problem, and we're going to have to bore the holes farther, and we're going to have to get the torque different than you think, and we're going to bid at 130,000, and so when we give the guys who bid 58,000 who didn't figure that out the 168,000, we should be giving it to the guy who really figured it out or the woman who really figured it out in the middle there." I mean, is that a possibility or what? I mean, how does that work? I don't understand that.
With the exception that it was a -- so our engineering service isn't the firm that's actually doing the work, so we contracted with an engineer to tell us what work -- what the scope of the work was. And when the contractor went in to do that work, so this is regardless -- this isn't the --
So the contractor's working off of the same person. They're all working off the same person.
Right.
Thank you. That answered my question. I really appreciate it.
Yep.
And I appreciate your clarity, too.
Any other?
So does --
Director Belial?
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry, Director. I just have a question about the remediation cost, especially with the -- you can't anticipate, right, a big downpour, but it sounds like the contractor tried to go in and do some work, but they were delayed because of some city work.
That's right.
That the city was not allowed, the city didn't have the permits out to not allow us access to that. I just wonder, is there any option for remediation? Is the contractor looking at the city, saying, "Perhaps if the work would have been done before the deluge, before the downpour, we could have safely gotten this completed and saved us some of the remediation cost"? I don't know if that's an option or...
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's an option either. I mean, we could look into that. I can look into that.
Because it seems to me the cost was going to be there. We still had to drill farther, because the soils weren't what we were expecting, but it seems like the cost of fixing the hole issue about the rain seemed related to timing and its chance, but if the contractor had gotten in when we thought they were going to get in and the city delayed us for that, or the city's contractor delayed us for that, there seems like some recourse.
Right. The contractor's going to want to get paid. I mean, and it wasn't unforced. Nobody predicted that it would -- the city didn't know it was going to rain, rain either, right?
Sure. But if the city would have allowed us to do the work when we wanted to, we wouldn't have had to deal with it.
Right.
Director Curler?
So just to follow up, the -- so the engineering turns out to be not -- that was not a good engineering work. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I mean, it's also a site where there were -- there's a lot of infill, so the site was filled. So unforeseen circumstances is a -- it happens a lot in the construction industry. And, you know, when they began boring, they started running into things that were buried underneath the soil that you have no way of knowing. All of these things impact the contractor and their ability to do that. Based on, you know, hindsight 2020, I think we should have taken more core samples.
For the engineering work.
For the engineering work.
Yeah.
Okay. Director Atkins?
I'll just add a comment. As the daughter of a civil engineer, when I see walls approximately one block long and 30 feet tall, you know, and given the nature of what we're up against in the number of different projects that this district has, you know, to me, this is just what we need to do, and it's unfortunate, but we need to move on, so.
Any others? The board will now vote on Resolution 4906. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? No? Are there any abstentions? Okay, Resolution 4906 is approved by a vote of five to zero, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, now we'll call us back into regular -- thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
I'll call us back into regular session, and we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is a report on the Division 22 report. Superintendent Smith, would you like to -- not here.
Oh, can I make it at the end? Last week, when I tried to make it at the end, you said I couldn't make it at the end, so I -- this week, I thought I'd take a shot at the first.
No, not right now.
So...
Superintendent Smith?
Neither the end or the first. Okay.
Amanda Whalen, who's the senior advisor to the superintendent, is going to present a report on our assurances to ODE about Division 22 compliance. Amanda?
Hi, Kitty Bang. One second. Let me just get this set up. Tonight, we're doing our report on the Division 22 assurances. I just wanted to walk you through quickly. So Division 22, as required by OAR, which is Oregon Administrative Rule 581-022-1610, Operating Policies and Procedures, all school districts must report the district's status with regard to the state standards, the Division 22 Oregon Administrative Rule. So this is our report. For 2013, we had that requirement to submit the assurance. This was the first time in two years. It had been suspended at the ODE because of capacity issues there, so this was the first time that we had done that, and they actually modified our assurances report, made it shorter this year. We had seven different regulations that we were not in compliance on. I'm going to walk you through those seven quickly here. So the first is credit options. As you know, per the March 14, 2014 letter from Deputy Director Rob Saxton, PPS was found to be out of compliance with meeting the 130 credit hour requirement per course at our high schools. As a way to rectify this for the 2014-15 school year, we have developed schedules that already meet that requirement and have provided those to the Oregon Department of Education. In addition, this will be part of a corrective action plan that we will be turning in to the department by June 11, 2014. Our second and third areas here are around expanded options annual notice and expanded options requirements. So what these are is the regulation is around promoting and supporting existing accelerated college credit programs and providing public funding to the eligible post-secondary institutions for educational services to eligible students to offset the cost of tuition fees, textbooks, equipments, and materials for students who participate in the Expanded Options Program. This allows students to earn concurrent high school and college credits. In previous years, PPS has received a waiver for these two regulations, and we have now submitted our waiver for the 1314 and 1415 school years. We anticipate hearing back from OD on that soon. The basis of our waiver is that the intent of the Expanded Options Program, which is to increase the participation of at-risk youth and historically underrepresented students, is best served by expanding existing dual credit programs and developing new opportunities here within PPS. So that's how we've received our waiver in the past years. So we've already submitted. What am I, on fourth? PPS is required to make a report to the community regarding compliance with Division 22 by January 15, 2014. We were awaiting results from a complaint that had been filed with the Oregon Department of Education, so we did not meet that deadline. This report that I am providing to you now will meet that regulation. We'll be providing copies of this presentation to the Oregon Department of Education. Additionally, there is a personnel policy which requires that addresses the requirement for releasing to the Teacher Standards and Practices Committee another district or a person upon request the disciplinary records of an employee or former school employee if the employee was convicted of a crime listed in ORS 342.143. While we have always done this as a practice, we do not have a policy or an administrative directive that states it, which is required by the Division 22 standard. For that reason, we will be amending our current personnel administrative directives no later than June 1, 2014, to add this requirement. Finally, there is a requirement that when we are awarding alternative credit to students and approving a proposed alternative for an individualized learning credit, schools must review those requests, and then they must be submitted to the board. While our schools have been approving those requests at the school level, we have not been submitting them to you for review. Starting with the 2014-15 school year, we will be doing that as part of our process. Okay, that was it.
Okay, do we have any questions?
I have a motion.
Well, let's take care of questions first. Questions and comments? No? Okay. Director Buell?
It's a common complaint procedure resolution.
Do you have a motion?
Sorry.
Which would start with, "I move," et cetera.
You know what? I am sorry, I forgot the last one. I apologize. And --
Do you have a motion?
Sorry.
Which would start with, "I move," et cetera. Just, no record.
I am sorry, I forgot the last one. I apologize, and Director Buell's statement just reminded me. So we do have a -- my apologies. So the final place where we are out of compliance is on our complaint procedure policy. This was also part of Deputy Director Saxton's March 14 letter. Again, the district is in the process of hiring an ombudsman and revising our complaint policies and procedures. That process will also be outlined for the June 11, 2014 corrective action plan. Sorry about that.
So at this time, Director Buell, if you have a motion, would you just go ahead and state your motion?
I move that it be resolved, the superintendent is instructed to review the parent and student complaint policy procedures and return to the board with a report stating recommendations for changes or new procedures. Be it further resolved, the above-mentioned report shall be delivered to the board by June 16, 2014. I have to speak to my motion.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
I want to speak to my motion.
Oh, the board discussion. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'm not in favor of this, A, because we had no inkling that this was coming forward beforehand, and also, but more importantly, because you just shared with us that that's actually what you're already planning to do. So I don't think we need this additional procedure, because your saying you're coming back with a report to us, so.
Director Buell?
I have some comments concerning our parent complaint procedures, which are relevant to this motion. First of all, what is missing is not necessarily a specific procedure, but a balance which allows parents and the district to work together to solve problems in the best interests of our children the best we can. It is not easy being a teacher, principal, or other employee that works in a school building. Teachers make thousands of decisions each day in relationship to sometimes hundreds of children. They are bound to make mistakes or have their actions misinterpreted. It comes with the job. Pretty much the same with principals and other employees. At the same time, parents want what is best for their children, and when adults in the school system don't live up to their standards, it is easy to be critical and judgmental. This mix can lead to some serious conflicts. Parents and school personnel don't have the same perspective, so it is necessary that there is a trust developed between them which allows for teachers to make mistakes or to be misinterpreted, and have parents understand this happens, and at the same time, to have school personnel respect and honor the parent perspective. Several things need to take place so that a balance is struck which allows for decisions to be made in the best interests of our children. There needs to be a serious effort on the part of all school personnel to welcome and support parents. This responsibility doesn't fall on teachers and principals, only on teachers and principals, but on all school personnel: secretaries, custodians, bookkeepers, educational assistants, bus drivers, and all district staff. Right now, some of our schools are wonderful at this, but some are not. We need a course correction that starts with us and the school board and our district administration. There have been too many cases of denigrating parent complaints by not seriously honoring the idea that parents are just trying to act in the best interests of their child. If the employee is a person of color, we have sometimes said the parents are just racist. If the employee is white, we have sometimes said the parents are just crazy parents. Now, don't get me wrong, there are racist parents and plenty of crazy ones. But that shouldn't be our default position. Our default position should be, how can I help you advocate for your child? And we mean it, and we do it. When we begin to put this into practice, we can then expect parents to see both sides of the issues, to see how difficult it is to be perfect as a teacher, to see that employees have many other responsibilities that tug at them, and that their child is not the only one. But we all need to work together for all children. So in summary, I want to see clear, concise parent complaint procedures which support what I've outlined above, and I would also like to see us put a timeline on those, or have the assurances, at least from the superintendent, that this will not drag out into next year. Well, I'd like to have it in place before the beginning of the school year, new complaint procedures. Thank you very much.
Director Belial?
So about the resolution, I won't be supporting it, just because I heard assurances. The state, it seems over-redundant to me, but I do want to acknowledge that we've been challenged with our parent complaint process this past year, and it's interesting, because one of the first times I remember, as a board member coming on this board and looking at budgets, and I think we were cutting at the time twenty-five or thirty million dollars, and at the time, we had community agents, we had a whole bunch of number of different pieces that we were looking at, who should we reduce? And our community clearly said, you have to keep the funding in the classroom, which we did, and the city came up with their five million dollars. But I also remember that we had an individual who was an ombudsman, who for the first time gave a direct point of contact, the thing that I hear so many parents complain about. And she was doing phenomenal work and working on this very thing, and then because of a budget cut, we reduced that position. So I appreciate what you're saying, Director Buell, and I do hear what parents are concerned about, and I've appreciated us looking at a reinvestment budget that even before that complaint came out, we were looking at reinvesting in this position, because it was a position that I heard a board member saying was interested in. So I guess I'm -- while I'm not supporting the resolution specifically, I appreciate the intent behind it, and also looking forward to following up to making sure that we can fix this.
Great, well said. Thank you. Director Kurler?
Yeah, I'll -- for all the reasons that Director Belial said that he wasn't going to support it, I'm going to support it, just for the same reasons. I think it's important, and I think it's important for us to -- I think it's important for us to -- for it to come back to us, and for the superintendent, for some thought, which I know is happening.
Sorry, yes.
Which is happening, but so I'll be supporting it, and appreciate the work that you're doing on it.
So, yeah, just to...
Yeah.
Yes. It's in motion right now to look at the policy, and we're actually in the budget amendment this year. You already approved the position for the ombudsman, and we're in the process of doing the interviewing right now, and we're very eager. You can feel the need for having such a position, and we can feel its absence, so, but in motion.
Mm-hmm.
Student Representative Davidson, do you have a...
I think I'll be supporting this. I think, you know, having it in writing is nice, and if it's going to happen, then it happens, and nothing to worry about, but, yeah.
Okay. Director Buell?
When is ombudsman, do you think, coming online?
Well, they're interviewing right now, so I don't have a date specific.
Well, would you guess maybe, was it next year, or?
No, we'll bring them on as soon as we complete the hiring process. Yeah, we'll negotiate when that person can actually start, so if they're leaving another job, it'll be, you know, figuring that out with them.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Then I'm also going to be voting against the motion, and the reason that I'm going to be voting against it, I agree with everything that Director Belial said around the importance of parent and are paying attention to what parents are saying, and I appreciate the work that the superintendent and the staff are doing on the complaint procedure, and I'm very excited to have an ombudsman coming onboard. I'm sorry that we ever cut that position, I don't think we should have, but as budgets go, at any rate, I'm very happy that that's a -- we're bringing that person back. But the main reason I am opposed to this motion is the procedure by which it came to the board. We have consistently said that we will not hear motions that have not been in the board packet, so that everybody knows that they're coming to the board. I went ahead and let this one come to the board, so that we could use it as an example of the problems that we have when we have a motion where nobody knows anything about the motion. It's very difficult to vote on it, and for that reason, I'm going to be voting no. All the question?
More discussion.
I'd like to call the question. Okay, the question has been called. All those in favor of the call-in question?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, you don't -- that's not available. I think I just do.
Call.
Failed, right?
No.
We haven't counted the vote yet.
We don't have to -- we don't have to vote on the call-in question. It's just called. Okay.
Nobody can just call the question with no vote. You can't just call the question in...
We are calling it. That's it. We're going to vote right now.
Oh, we're going to vote now?
Yes, we're going to vote right now.
On the call-in question?
We're going to vote on the resolution. We're going to vote on the resolution right now. Okay? All those in favor of the resolution? Say aye?
Yes. Aye.
All those opposed? No? No. Abstentions?
Motion is not carried.
Then the motion is not carried. Okay.
And you want to ask the student?
Yeah, do I get to vote on that?
Well, I'm sorry. I was looking at you and thinking...
Oh, yeah.
I was waiting for you to state or say yes. I'm sorry, I should have said, student representative Davidson voting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. Okay, now onto the business agenda.
Point of order.
And what would that be?
You made a statement that was untrue, in that you said that we had decided that we had decided that no motion should come to the board unless they were presented ahead of time. A, we've never decided that. B, it doesn't fit -- it doesn't fit state law, it doesn't fit federal law, it doesn't fit Robert's Rules of Order, and it doesn't fit any of our policies. So it's just something you're making up, and you don't get to make things up, even if you are the chairperson. We -- if we want to have that policy, we need to have four votes for that policy, and then that policy will be struck down because it's illegal, because under the state's open meetings law, you can't turn around and not allow someone to make any motions? You can't make a motion if it's on the agenda, you can't make a motion if it's off the agenda, and you certainly don't have to run a motion as a -- as an elected official with forty-seven thousand people voting for me. I don't have to run a motion.
I don't think it was quite that mandatory.
I don't have any -- I don't have -- somebody told me it was. The -- I never did check.
Yeah.